We do have a Spanish interpretation available if anybody needs that. Available in the lobby. All right, welcome, everybody. Appreciate everyone being here. My name is Dr. Amy Carter. I'm the Sonoma County Superintendent of Schools. I am an elected position. I have a four-year term. And one of the biggest misconceptions about my job is that I am the boss of all the schools. So I spend a lot of time making people understand that Sonoma County Superintendent plays a support role. We have some oversight when it comes to district budgets. We have some accelerated responsibilities and rights that happen when districts fail to meet a balanced budget. But beyond that, we really much are in the backseat behind local boards. In California, really, our model is that it's our local communities that make the best decisions for our local schools. So there's never a time where my authority really supersedes that local board, the exception of really a budget emergency. Really appreciate everybody being here tonight, even though you would consider seventy-nine of those roles. There's a lot about the kind of human beings that we have in this room here. You know, the role of a school board member, you have a lot of responsibilities, really setting the tone for a district, setting the budget, deciding how resources are going to be allocated. You have a role in selecting a particular curriculum. But more than that, you become really the eyes and ears for your district around what's important to your community. And then you have responsibility to act and make decisions and vote in ways that reflect your constituents and the people that are speaking to you. So it can be a very difficult role, as you imagine. You hear from a lot of people who have a lot of different opinions and you have the responsibility to kind of ferret that out and make decisions that are always students' base. I find that even when our board trustees disagree or don't find themselves alive, that the board members that we have serving here at Sonoma County are focused on children. They care about children, and that's what brings us to this role. And I imagine that's what's bringing all of you here to this role. I want to thank Monique, who's here translating. I think she's in the back. But we've been very excited. We've pulled together some of the experts in our community to share with you a little advice, a little bit of insight, perhaps some time to ask some of those burning questions that you've got. But I'll turn the time over to Peter Jackson, who's going to be our moderator tonight. Thank you for being here.
All right, can everyone hear me through this one? Okay. I'm Peter Jackson, Executive Director at the North Coast School of Education. And a little bit about North Coast School of Education is that we administer credential programs for our new and aspiring teachers and administrators. So when I was thinking about tonight and knowing that we're going to talk about school boards, I was thinking about my own experience as a site leader, site principal, and my experience with the school board. At my district, I found that they were really involved. I thought of three things. They were visible, approachable, and touchable. And what do I mean by that? Visible, meaning at back-to-school nights, our school board members, our trustees, would be there. I was shocked. I had no idea that trustees would come to back-to-school nights in open houses. Approachable, meaning for principal chats, the second principal coffee, we talked to the parents. Guess who was there? One of the trustees. How do you think that made me feel as a site principal, right? I felt like, oh, I can approach them, that they weren't so far away, that it wasn't just my superintendent who could talk to them. They were there. They were approachable. And then what do I mean by touchable? I meant, I mean, when there was decisions that affected the school sites, which pretty much all the decisions do. But when they had questions, I knew that they reached out to my superintendent, but guess who would give me a call? Trustees, because they wanted boots-on-the-ground information, right? It's not that they didn't trust my superintendent, but they wanted me to know that they were there and they were listening and they were there to support. That's what I mean by touchable. So when you all are thinking about running, obviously, you're here, but if you went and get on the school board, remember these three things: visible, approachable, touchable. All right, now let's shift over to the agenda. So to begin, we'll have our school board trustees. They're obviously on the panel. They're going to answer some questions. Then after that, the registrar voters, they will have a presentation. There'll be questions and answers and closing comments. But I want to talk to you about some of the guidelines before we have our panelists speak to you. And that is, the first question will go to all the panelists. So that will give them the opportunity to introduce themselves. And then all the rest of the questions thereafter, I'll call on two of the trustees and they'll answer the questions. We will try to limit all of our answers to about one minute so we can make sure that we get to all of the questions. That is hard, right? Because they're all passionate about what we do, but one minute. And we will have Lacy. Lacy, wave your hand, everyone. All right, we will have Lacy give you a signal. So please, you know, as you're talking, kind of glance over and she will give you a signal when your time is just about up. Then we'll have a presentation by Troy Kennedy and Will Stephenson. And after that presentation, my colleague Eric. Eric, wave your hand. All right, Eric is going to hand out comic cards so that you all can write your questions in English or in Spanish. And we'll give you a few minutes after Troy and Will's presentation. You'll be able to write down your questions. You'll have about five minutes to do so. You can also use the restroom, take care of whatever you need within those five minutes, and come back. And then we will answer those questions. So now I would like to remind our panelists to speak slowly and clearly so that Monique can, you can assist Monique in her translation. All minds clear? All right, let's get it started. So this first question is for everyone. Why did you first run for school board?
All right. Put this on. There we go. Good evening. My name is Andrew Leonard. I'm the Area Three Trustee for the SCO Board. My kind of circumstance of being a board is a little bit unique in that I was working in education nonprofits in 2015 when a vacancy appeared on the SCO Board and the vacancy was filled by a applicant. This is not something that happens super often, but it does happen in school districts across the county and through SCO. So I actually applied to join the SCO Board, interviewed in public among other candidates and was deliberated about in front of the public among the other candidates. And so, yeah, my process of getting employed is not by election. I ended up running for reelection the next year after the one-year term, provisional term was up, and then running again in 2020, both contested. So my path was a little bit different than most people's, but I've enjoyed it nonetheless. And I've also enjoyed not necessarily having to campaign, although there's all paperwork involved in the campaign.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Claudia Mendoza Torres and I'm part of our ASG membership. And I am the Third Board President of Toro Unified School District, which is a small, little town. Don't forget about us. We're still in Sonoma County. So I am the current Board President. I ran for a seat in 2020 when COVID was around and I was unprecedented in times. And the reason why I wanted to run was simply to give back to the community that I grew up in and that supported me throughout all of my educational goals. And I went off to college, I came back, and so it was a time for me to be able to just give back to my community that supported me throughout those years.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. My name is Kimberly Shaver. I am actually on the opposite end of the county, so I'm from the south, in Petaluma. I'm at this small elementary school district, Old Adobe Union School District. And I ran at the time I was running. I actually decided to run right after my third child. And I have been an educator, a teacher, for over twelve years. And I needed to step back from that teaching position, although I was still very passionate about education. So I took time off with my three events, so I wanted to stay involved in education. So I ran the school board member right now. It was in 2018, prior to COVID. And, yeah. I will say, I lived in a library at the time that they were painting our, my son had just started the school district and they were painting the school. And I was like, there's some shush, it's paint color.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kayla Clay. I'm a she/her from Petaluma. I'm Board President of Petaluma City Schools, the biggest school district in Petaluma. And the only school district in Sonoma County that has a little school. So shout out to our little partners. Love you. I ran back in 2012 also for a lot of similar reasons like, yeah, I wanted to go to college. Came back to my community and I wanted to give back. I remember visiting my teachers on the strike line in 2017, thinking, wow, I need to support whoever is running this season COVID this next year. And there were only two people thinking about running for a three seats. So even though I was at the ripe old age of 25, I was just original enough to say, you know what, why not me? Why not me? So I was working full-time, didn't have a lot of, you know, community connections to fundraise for, but knocked doors, sent text messages, did all the things, and ended up winning in the community. So I'm really excited to be here and share my experience with all of you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shawna. I'm the President for the County of Toro Unified School District. So we are in Chapter 12. I ran in 2020 during the pandemic, when I was younger or this year. I originally did it, I heard this quote at one of the conferences. A trustee said, I did it for my child and I saved for all the children, which is really kind of why I did it. Our son has a child that's in elementary school. He's not a typical B-plus student. So my, I wanted my campaign slogan to be, it shouldn't be this hard. I come from the private sector and I have learned that the public sector, we, education is very, very hard. So that's kind of why I did it, because I just wanted to be more involved and see how the process worked and how just so long could maybe get written in Sonoma County's life.
Thank you. All right. Question. What compensation does your district offer trustees? And we'll have Trustee Leonard and Trustee Shaver answer that question in that order.
Great. So the Sonoma County State Education offers trustees a small monthly stipend. In our case, it's about, I think it's about $330 a month. And health insurance benefits, if you don't already have those. And for me, the health insurance benefits were great because they were better than what my employer was offering me. So all in all, after taxes are taken out and I pay my share for my spouse's healthcare benefits, I receive a dollar and five cents to be direct deposit every month. And then I also owe taxes on the entire amount at the end of the year. So the compensation is very small. The health benefits are very nice. But the compensation for me is the reward of doing it.
Old Adobe offers similar with, they'll offer $500 for the health insurance package. I was supposed to say, and the difference is on you. Or you can do, take that $500 and take $240 home with you and then donate, reallocate the other $264 program or of your ever choice. So I plan to have some amazing programs for sports sciences. So that's a nice way to contribute monthly back to the school. So they, if you have a self-well community beginning with young kids, it paid for, they are any to do with.
Thank you. Next question. What is the time commitment and how is the time spent? Trustee Quinn and Trustee Mendoza Torres.
So the time commitment can really vary, both on the time of here, your interest and your availability. And I'm still working full-time. Luckily, now I work from home and I have a pretty understanding of my school boss, so I can make time to do some things during the day. But then I also have retired colleagues who can go to a meeting that runs all day. And luckily, they will step up and do that on behalf of the three of us that do work full-time on the board. So some weeks it's as little as one or two hours, just answering emails. And other weeks, especially in graduations days, then it feels like a whole-time job in addition to a whole-time job. I would say the most consistent time commitment is those meetings, whatever day of the week, you know, day of the month that you're working, really doing your priorities, those in your life. You know, that's the bare minimum the voters are expecting you to do. But other than that, you know, going to back-to-school night or open house, or we do office hours at each of our school sites, and we have a lot of school sites that do office hours once a semester at each school site. And the five of us try and split out as much as possible based on timeframes of work for that community. So it really is as much or as little as you're able and willing to put into it, I would say.
I echo everything that is on, it's on, for you to be on. Maybe. Hello? Hello? There we go. So I echo everything that Trustee Quinn stated. One of the other things that we, or I consider is when we receive a board package, I like to read. I'm a slow reader. My English is my second language, so I need to read everything. If you've seen a board packet, there usually is like 200 pages filled with a bunch of blood. Who knows? But you read it and then what I do is I have questions and I write down questions and I send it to my superintendent. Depending on the questions, I usually end up meeting with the CEO or the Chief Business Officer because I have a lot of financial questions, or it's like, what is this line item on line fee or whatever? What's that number mean? I don't understand why it looks different to this one, what's going on? So the thing, I have a lot of those questions with the financial aspect of school budgets. And I was very grateful to take the time and get my CEO to be able to give me kind of a run-through and some prep work to be able to address all of my questions. I can say that I started off with like three pages of questions for my superintendent and they were like, all right, you have a lot of questions. And I'm like, yeah, we're going to finish in two hours. You know, give me some responses before so that I can, I can, I know what I'm walking into. So just taking time or just taking this consideration and the amount of time to prep for a board meeting, which is something that I think everybody forgot, reading board packets now, getting to the habit of just glancing them, getting to the format, and understanding what the summary page is, what is the agenda, what is the action discussion, what is the adjournment, all of those little things that go into sitting and actually having and doing and running a board meeting. At several of your events, as a board member, I probably get spent like five to 10 hours per week, depending on whether or not you have a board meeting, have your emails, getting in contact, sending up the weekly meeting with my superintendent. And then also, now as Board President, it's a little bit longer, there's more meetings.
Thank you. What is most rewarding about being a trustee? Trustee Wayne and Trustee Leonard, remember to turn your attention over to Lacy.
Yes, our graduations are most rewarding for me. So again, you know, those are all at the end and wishing the students best and knowing that, you know, we successfully got them through T-Day through 12 and they are on their way. That is the best. And then for me, it's a close second between me and students coming to each of our board meetings so that we can actually see the real faces and what's really going on in the schools and sort of seeing their projects and their progress. And then when we finally launch a new program, just a lot of the rates thanks for me. Probably other stuff is routine and...
As I alluded to at the beginning. That works? Nope, not this one? Okay. There we go. Thank you so much. As I alluded to at the beginning, I was working in education nonprofits when I became a school board member. And one of my biggest pillars, so to speak, was family engagement with students. And so being able to visit, talk to students at our Emerson Academy, which is our alternative education high school, getting to see those students in their, you know, classrooms and talk to them. I find it fascinating what they're doing, why they're there, what their aspiration is extremely rewarding for me. The community goal cannot be overstated. I think that, you know, it's an opportunity to go talk to many, many different nonprofits, see the work that they're doing at SCO, and maybe to know all the great work that's happening in the community. And it's really other than that. I found it extremely rewarding and just a pleasure to be around all the people.
What are some of the challenges of being a trustee? And that will be answered by Trustee Mendoza Torres and Trustee Shaver.
And it will be short. Seeing, I think one of the challenges is how do we communicate to the community why decisions were made based on the action that we took? I think it's a lot of work goes into like, okay, what are the agendas? What's the action that's going to come into? What's the why and what's the purpose of taking that action? And if it's not articulated or clearly stated as to what's the purpose of taking that action, people make their own conclusion and it could be completely opposite to what the board or what the direction is and therefore lead to misunderstanding that leads to conflict. Therefore, just being able to articulate the purpose and the why to the actions that we're taking.
I'm not sure. There's a kind of venue. There are challenges in my case. I think I've seen quite a few, but definitely during COVID was a huge challenge. I'm one of the air cons that was challenging and, to your point, being able to communicate why certain decisions were made. Negotiations is always very difficult. I think as a trustee and as a former teacher, you know, you'll probably at one point be told you don't care about the teachers at some point. And that's very hard to hear as a trustee, it'll be some difficult moments like that. There's also, sometimes with, I think, through several superintitents, hiring. And there's also sometimes personality differences on board. Like through, a lot of those are common themes, kind of navigating, kind of knowing your own voice, start navigating your collective voice that you have as a board with also your independent voice and why you were elected and recognizing that, I think, is very challenging to me to, that is up here. But there's going to be things on the agenda that you don't necessarily want to approve or you need more information, you need more time on. And speaking up to that and asking those hard questions, or whether there's a lot of proof there or voice and having to kind of spill that down or ask questions, that's, those are really challenging times. But it's our job. It's what we need to do.
What was something about being a trustee that you did not anticipate? Trustee Quinn and Trustee Mendoza Torres.
Yeah, when they asked this question of us in advance, my first thought was absolutely COVID. Again, during 2018, oh boy, we did not see that coming. I'm not sure if you know this, but I am the lady president. I did nothing to say that. I think one of the things I did not anticipate, that we kind of alluded to, of how you need to communicate about decisions that were hard to make or seem unnecessarily convoluted or in legalese, making decisions that are related to personnel or student privacy, so you really can't say anything. And then, you know, the local paper is like, or did not respond to comment. And I'm like, well, yeah, we can't comment on the students, what, you know, maybe your issues to a paper. They are minor, they are student protection. So there are things like that, I would say, I didn't anticipate. But I also didn't anticipate some of the positive feedback from families, from students, from teachers and staff. When we do things, right, because in my experience, it's usually only here with negative people, but there are the positive people. I'm like, oh, I'm going to hear enough to deal with all the feedback.
One of the things that I didn't anticipate is how fast people can turn out on you. In a small, in a small town, and it's very, very small. And it's, I think that was the hardest when you have supporters and you're at the coffee shop and somebody comes out and it's very angry and it's shrieking and you're just like, hey, do you want to sit down? And we can talk about it and we can discuss. And they're just like, no. And they just walk off. And you're just like, I dropped my things, go cry in my car for a moment and then pull myself back together. I think that that was something that I didn't anticipate, that it happened so quickly. Yeah, with that, and then the amount of, I knew there was a amount of learning. I didn't recognize the amount of learning of being like a trustee and a whole nother level of like board policies and budget, like budget and negotiations and the intricacies of like how you behave, what you do, you voted yes, you voted no, you get faced, all of these things where I'm like, oh my gosh, I didn't anticipate it being so different. I under-shoulded, but I didn't until I stepped here and understood more.
Thank you. What resources and professional development are available for new trustees? Trustee Shaver or Trustee Wayne?
When I first started, when I first found the board, actually, our board didn't really have anything. I'm going to give a shout out to our alma mater, Superintendent Secretary. She would always forward stuff from SCO that was big. And this workshop, there's a new board member workshop, Heidi Royman, very helpful. You know, seven masters in management program, which I also did with Heidi Royman. Those are all good things. Now we have developed our own governance handbook. I think a lot of other districts may not have had it, we've done, and that we have been able to from work for new members. So you have a one-on-one with the superintendent, a one-on-one with the CEO. You have now a whole government handbook that tells you those protocols and the procedures for how meetings are run and what to expect with the agenda setting and how to get something on the agenda. All questions I think are really to figure out and I have to figure out and I have no idea. I'm reading the nine thousand of the board policies. Actually, nine thousand series is for us. It's good reading. Comment, reviewing all those things. So seeing like Leonard and panelists have said, just like I might have been thinking that I would know this and I'm absolutely happy. So between the Lego and the darkens, oh, yeah, friends. And the way you think the world and why it should work, and then you go down like Alice's Wonderland and you hop the other side, head upside down. So the elderberry school board association, our district is a member of that, so they do classes, they do organization, they do workshops, they have amazing conferences each year. Our board does a governance workshop every single year. And when we have new trustees, we come in, it sets expectations, how do we act amongst each other? How do we act with our superintendent and our district? SCO does amazing trainings. They also throw a fear ISO vote in for budgets. And this is what's happening on the state level and they've done it down so that most of us have done all of this every single year. And this is what's happening on the state level and they've done it down so that most of us have done all this every single day. I understand it. And one of the most rewarding things, CSKA used to do, we kind of fell apart a little bit, is just networking with other board members. Because you think in your little bubble that this is the way everyone else is doing it and then you go meet with other board members, you're like, whoa. And so just taking those practices from other boards and trying to figure out how you can be most efficient. And no question is too dumb, like, as long as you, someone else has asked it at some point, so.
Thank you.
And Google, I mean, worst case, just Googling.
All right. What was your first campaign like? Trustee Mendoza Torres and trustee Shager.
My first campaign was during COVID. So it was different, or right here, it was different, it was my first one, so it was what it was. I didn't know, I didn't have anybody in my network that had done a campaign. So there was a free webinar series on Zoom from a campaign consultant and it was four sessions. And they kind of just gave us the outline. And so I went to those, I took down my notes. I wrote it down and I then created a team with me and two other people, my manager and my treasurer. I asked too many questions to Troy and sent him too many emails. Troy, raise your hand. He told me no, go back and correct it. I realistically, the biggest thing was like understanding your why and understanding why you're running and like cementing every decision that you're making as to why you're doing what you're doing. And then you get to do work. I looked at when the ballots were mailed out, that was my timeline. And then I just worked planned and I went out and got my name out there.
I, I just took some time to really understand what the role was. And I met with the superintendent and the district and met with some of the board members and attended a couple of board meetings a person. And then I just kind of told friends and people at my children's school that I was running. That was the extent of my year.
I did write a statement that I feel is very thoughtful about my intentions for providing the trustee. So I would highly recommend writing a statement and a statement of qualifications. And this, our district does take the back, I'm not sure.
Thank you. What are the most effective strategies for communicating with voters? Trustee Wayne and trustee Quinn?
When was it during my communication with voters during a campaign or during like once you're on? So we're going to split here. During a campaign, I would, we're in a market, so the communication with voters during a campaign was like, I would throw them on anything, so that was like my, so I did mailers and I walked to neighborhood and talked to people. Trying to remember my district, so it was my hometown or my own neighborhood, so that was easy. Not easy, sorry, that's still the wrong word, but it was doable.
For during, like, once you're on, communicating with voters, we have started, we do a staff weekly email. And so we have a little board section in there that talks about what the board is doing. We also stream all of our meetings online and we encourage people to communicate with us. You can go, if you want to see what a school is working on sometimes, so if you find one of our YouTube channels, you can watch it and all the story. And we try to be out in the face a lot, so we're at different events, we're out communicating, we're doing stuff like that. It is hard though, because sometimes the questions that voters have, things that people say, either because of Veronica or because of those session rules or just not hard on governance policies, sometimes you can't give the information, the answer that the people want. And I just explain it. I frequently tell people about Veronica, frequently tell people about what our limitations are and what we can say. And kind of, that's one of the hard things, is telling these sort of things to me. My background is in nonprofit communications, so I think communicating with voters is how I, how I got on the board. I was the first candidate and I was a bunch of text voters, like no one had tried that in my age. So I thought, let's try that. And a lot of people were like, whoa, how'd you get my number? I shared a voter game, I am real cheap, I don't. And so I uploaded it into a texting app. I would just, they completely, you need a person to press the button to send the text. So I sent about eight thousand of those texts and my friends and volunteers sent about another two or three thousand. And since a lot of people hadn't been texting yet, it wasn't like it is now. So there were a lot of positive responses or genuine questions and good back and forth. And so that was really key for me as someone who didn't have a lot of money and didn't have a lot of time. So on weekends and evenings, I would just pick a neighborhood and go knock on doors of any registered voter. Because even though I was a Democrat, I was happy to talk to Republicans in the event. And a lot of people will say, I only talk to registered voters in your party, but especially for school, or that's bad advice. So those were the two big things. I just, I mean, that was all my free time was running for office, but it worked.
Thank you. We're at the last question. How is the county board of education different from the district school board? Trustee Larry?
Thank you. So like Dr. Parks said at the beginning, the county office does not oversee the school board. So we have a very different charge as a county board as well. We have a lot less day-to-day oversight ability that works in some organizations compared to a local school board. You know, just as the superintendent, superintendent is elected. As a board, we set superintendent salary. We do not hire and discharge the superintendent like people do with school districts. So it's a very, very different charge. Many people think that we have control over the superintendent's policies, but we do not. We hear here district transfer appeals hearings as well as expulsion hearings, which do not typically come to the school districts. Yes, school districts here appeals sometimes for district transfers, but once they've been isolated to us, we are kind of fine, saying, I'll stay. And I, my tenure that's never happened. So we can hear some kind of emotionally charged hearings several times a year, which is a challenging experience to everybody, I think. And the last thing I'll add here is to kind of over time is that we, as trustees and county boards, serve as a resource for local school districts and for the trustees. We can be a sounding board. I just had a trustee in another district texting me the other night about some policy. We talked about it, we talked a tear for a while and I said, let me call Pete. So, you know, I want to be there as a resource and come to the school board meetings sometimes in my local districts, although it hasn't been a little while. I try my best to make myself available, give people my phone and say, hey, you know, we're here to talk, we're here to be a sounding board.
All right. Well, we've come to the end of this part of the agenda. I'd like to thank the panelists for answering the question and Monique for translating. Now I'd like to introduce to you Troy Kennedy and Will Steffensen from the registrar of voters' office. They're here to go over the process and deadlines for filing to run for office and to let you know who at the registrar's office can help you. I would like to remind you both to speak slowly and clearly so that you can assist Monique.
Great, thank you. So our first slide here should be just kind of the rundown, give your contact. If you decide to run, you have any questions or really just want to know more about it. So Kamari Marchak is our manager and our little group here. He makes like, but he is pretty ever-present to give questions sometimes, we have a ton to go on. And then Troy's here with me, he does a lot of the campaign finance, filing voter record requests, something like that. And then I look more with candidate filing competitions. So really all three of us can answer the basic questions, but if we don't, mostly if I don't have the answer, also need to enjoy Kamari for more specialized information. We have all the forms of Troy to go over, most all the forms of Troy to go over. We've got full things there, the QR code takes you to our website where we have all those. I think they're all updated now? Yep, they're all updated, okay. Next slide. That one. This is just more about if you decide to file, more ways to contact us. So if you have questions and just want to make a written response, that email, rvp-campaign@nomad.com.org, that's going to be the best one. That's monitored by three of us. That phone number there will call Troy directly. And that's if you have any questions, try again. And then if you are mailing in any documents or any review, mailing address at the PO box. And then when you come to do your paperwork, finally, that's our physical address, the group is all off the site screen. Four three five, this will drive it down. And then just for more information about our office or anything like that, that's our general website. If you may, you can find everything there. And then with Troy, um, deadlines.
So again, Troy, you can get filing, campaign finance. And so we're like just the important deadlines and briefly over the form, a lot of the ballots should you want to run for office? So the most important ones, nominations opens July fifteenth. So this is the first day you can come into our office and file paperwork to get on the ballot. So it closes August nineteenth. That's the last day you can come in. And then there is an extension period, which is August fourteenth, is five days after the end of the close of noms. And that's only if the incumbent does not file for that district. So everyone else but the incumbent can file by that time. I don't know if we're going to do questions abstractly or at the end here?
We can take them after.
Okay. So then October seventh is when mobile mail opens. So that's when you can come to our office and actually get your ballots and we'll all start mailing them out October seventh. And then election day of course, November fifth. So these are the forms that you guys hand out at, in the hallway. If I saw a form that you'll need to fill out. And so I'll go with them briefly here. So the first one is the canvas folder, just, that's just your basic info. You can find that, all these forms you can find on our website. So you can choose if you want to fill them out ahead of time and we'll review them when you come in or you can just pick them up in our office. So the first one is just your basic info, you're just writing down your name and your contact information and whatnot. The next one is the ballot designation worksheet. So if you've seen on the ballot or in voter information guides, candidates have the choice of putting three words, up to three words that describes their primary occupation or location and that goes underneath their name on the ballot. So this is a worksheet that you fill out to designate that and you justify your use of that. So like if you were a firefighter, you'd be able to justify that saying, I work at this fire station, this time here or something like that. You're just basically justifying the use of that designation. Campaign statements. Everyone has to file something, but what you file depends on how much money you plan to raise or spend. So a lot of these school boards, you know, we get a lot of school boards that say that they, they have a hard time just getting people they found to sign up for a board. So a lot of them will just file Form 470, which is listed online, again, that handout. You get a little description of why you file what form. Form 470 is just you aren't raising or spending any money. Form 470 and 501, you're raising or spending money but less than $2,000. And Form 410 establishes a committee and you file that with the Secretary of State and our office just gets a copy and asks anything $2,000 or more. So the next one, Form 700. If there's any incumbents here, you're familiar with that, because you have to fill it out annually. But you also have to fill it out as a candidate. So when you come in to file this form, it is basically where you're vetting any economic, financial interests you have within the district you're running for. So this can be the most complicated one, it's in a thirty-five page packet, but most people will only have to fill out the cover page, again, depending on how much economic and financial interest you have within your district. So there's a very nice summary page, it's like on page five of the pack or something like that, that gives you a list of all the different schedules that you might need to attach to that. And it should give you common reportable interests where you can just read down and say, oh, man, I have to file this based on that. So I would just read through that and of course, our office is here to help any questions you have. And you can come in person, we'll help you fill it out. So that one can be the most confusing, but it's like if you have rental property within your district, you receive money for that sort of thing. You don't have to report your announce or something like that. The declaration of candidacy is the last form that you fill out and that's why you do have to come into our office physically to finish the process. It's basically just a summary of all the forms you filled out already, but it's more like it's certifying your designation and the exact way you want your name to appear on the ballot. And that's also when you do your oath of office. So we'll swear to you in at that time. And that's once you've done everything. Statement qualifications, as mentioned earlier. So we reach out to all of these. So SCO, Lacey actually sends out a nice little form to each district and they get on there who's going to be paying for statement qualifications, the candidate or the district. So you might want to check with your district or call our office if you want to find out who's paying for those statements, because there is a cost to it. We can provide you with estimates for that as well. The reason there's a cost is because it costs money to print in the voter information guide. And it's, I think it's mailed to all voters within your district. So the cost is dependent on how many registered voters are in your district. But what this is, is a two-hundred-word statement and it appears in the voter information guide and it's basically your way of explaining why it is you feel you are qualified to run for the position you're running for and why voters should vote for you. And again, this form can be found on our website and there's all kinds of guidelines that you'll need to follow for it, so you just read the backside of that. And yeah, payment will go to your district, your school district, and then school district will collect that payment and give you receipt, you bring that receipt into our office and then you'll be able to go. That is if the district gave the payment. That's pretty much it for the statement qualification there. And that's, that's kind of all the forms. And by the way, the statement qualification is optional, so it's not something you have to do, it's totally up to you.
It's a good one.
It's the same deadline as the end of nomination, so August ninth.
Okay, thanks. All right. Thank you Troy and Will. Now I'd like to go over the procedures for question and answer session. So we are now going to open up the floor for questions and answers from the audience, or questions and answers, questions from the audience. We'll take a five-minute break to give Monique a chance to rest and for you all to write your questions. Use the restroom and like, mommy, get a drink or just a stretch break, right? You can save for a little while. So if there's anything you want to know that we have not addressed in the presentation or if you have any questions about what you've just heard, please write them down on the comment cards that my colleague Eric is handing out. We can take questions in English or Spanish. Please leave your questions to the topics covered in this presentation as opposed to questions about SCO programs or particular policies or decisions at the board members' school districts. If you have these types of questions, please connect with us after the presentation and we'll work with you to get them answered. All righty, your five minutes begins now. It is time for our question and answer. So there was a question that I'm going to answer, which is, what is the length of the term for the school board? Four years. Did I get that right, Pam?
Yes.
Okay. Four beautiful years. All right. Ethan Cosgrove asked a question specifically to Troy. Our district just went to trustee elections. So there's no incumbent?
Aerial elections, right? Oh, yeah. I think Ari- Arian?
Is that what you meant?
Arians, yeah.
Okay. So there's no incumbent? Um, so there's no incumbent. Will there be an extended deadline?
Uh, yes, there will be, um, because, um, there's no incumbent, as I can file. So, yeah, it's one of those technicalities, um, they can use like, uh, they can use, um, trustee or board member, governing board member as their designation on like your ballot designation, but they're definitely not.
All right, this question is from Irene. Are there term limits? That's the first question. And is there a county-wide association or group of trustees? And this could be for any of our trustees to answer.
Very unfortunately, no, there aren't. There are people that stay for a long, long time, I have feelings about that very much. I, I saw the most term limit, I think, is, but it is, there's no term limit, um, most local boards don't have term limits as a whole, individual bodies might decide to make term limits a thing, but, no. And there are events at school where we get together as county folks, and we look for each other at statewide conferences, but there's not, there's not really an existing bond either, or we all get emails from or have messers and have fun, but that would be a good convention if one wants to take that one.
Okay. So, um, Sheldon asked a question to either Troy or Will.
Yes.
After July fifteenth, how can I stay up to date on who has filed to run? That's the first question. And the second question is, what if no one files?
So after the candidates file in, in the office, we keep a physical visor on our front counter, and you can see who has it on, and then we're going to start picking on the website as well as here. So we'll have who's filed on the website as well. You can always email our colleagues, who has filed, who hasn't, uh, it's like, uh, the second question was, what if no one files? Yeah, if no one files, uh, it doesn't go to the election, and then I believe, yeah, they won't, it doesn't work.
Oh, yeah. Um, so our district last year, our last election, we didn't have two people file, so you actually have to wait until, um, the election is done, because then it's official that no one was elected, and then you have to go, and there's this huge one process, you have to do, um, a notification that says there's a open seat, you have to take an application, you have to publish how you're going to receive those applications. When you receive those applications, you have a board set up, a nominating committee or a, or a review committee. You're not necessarily seeing if they're great candidates, you're seeing if they meet the qualifications, like if they're part of a, or insurance, if they live in the district, if they not refer a school, and, um, are they U S citizens, and, and Troy tells us, yes, they qualify or they don't. I think, I don't know, someone over there says, yes, they qualify or they don't. Um, and then you have to do, you literally go through your job, and you have to do, it's all done in public, so just know that you'll be interviewed in public, and, um, all the deliberations are in public too, so the trustees talking publicly about who they think the best person is, if they don't think the best person is, and then they both, and then congratulations, John Board, and then you're only on the board until the next general election, so that is not a four-year term, it's just until the next general election, election, and then we go again. Thank you.
I'll add real quick that the same, the same process applies if the trustee resigns or leaves the office for any reason. Um, so we had to do something similar actually right after, I also had two other new resources for it, and that's how we got Sheldon, we picked him, and then he decided to refer to us.
Thank you. So this question is from Robin Thompson to any of our trustees. Most school board seats are filled by appointment rather than at the ballot. Could you briefly describe how that process works? And if you just did. Okay, to any of our trustees again. How valuable is teaching experience for candidacy and campaign work? Is public, private, and/or higher education teaching experience preferred?
I can answer this with some generalities. I taught abroad, I did not teach in the U S, but I feel like having classroom experience in and of itself is a good tool for professional development, for speaking in front of other people, or, uh, simplifying things, or getting ideas across. I think that in general, it helps to have some experience, of course, some experience is better than no experience, but experience in the classroom or a district is not a requirement in and of itself in a school board member. So I have not taught in an American school, I've not worked in an American school district, and very, my years into a SCO server, so I think I'm okay.
I, well, I asked when I've done my teaching experience, it's been a couple, but it's not a requirement, there's many trustees that have a teaching background, if you think it can, you know, from that.
And I, uh, I really think in all ways it's important to have diversity on boards, and so that means, yes, some people with a teaching background, but other people without a teaching background. I'm the only one on my board without an education background, um, and when we had student board members, they actually pointed out that, um, for people that have been in the system so long, sometimes they can't see something from another point of view, or see a different solution that maybe that would have, would have come about. So I get a full credit to my student board members for that, let's do the board members with my days, take a little bit of life, try it that way. Uh, but truly, like, diversity of background, of age, of race, of gender, um, this is like the one elected office that's mostly women, so men you need to run to, and one of my air quotes, always please. But, yeah, I think it is very helpful to have the, that teacher's perspective, especially when going into negotiations with the teachers union, and on that, and also, um, others, any other staff background, any other person that's been any type of school employee, I don't think we see a lot of C S E A, um, former employees like school secretaries or custodians, I believe, running, and I think that they would bring really valuable voices to the board as well.
Okay. This question is from Dana Carney to, again, any of our trustees, and I think it probably varies per district, but the question is, is healthcare coverage for the whole family, and is it limited to a certain provider?
So that's going to be district to district specific, so each district has its own health plan, um, and it's on a cost. So for Friday morning, we are a one and done district, so once you have signed up, if your family won, you're covered, if your family had five hundred, you're covered, um, or one cost. Um, board members have the option of taking advantage of that, like a regular employee, or you don't have to, so it's up to you if you want to take it or not. And I, I think we have, like, two or three different options, so it would be the same option the teachers have.
Yeah, at a limit, city schools have the same option as teachers and other staff, the district will pay up to a certain dollar amount, or it's any of, maybe, maybe five plans, like three different providers, you can have different levels of all of that, so, like, healthcare system. Uh, and then dependents, it's the same type of coverage that teachers and other staff have, and so I think, I don't know for sure, so I can remember, I think it's around like fifty percent for dependents, and so you would be expected to pay the district monthly for that other half, um, unless you're lucky enough, your segment covers that.
Our district's just five, or whatever, or they offer.
In Colorado, we have no health benefits. We have a two-hundred-and-sixty-dollar stipend, and that is on monthly.
Trustee benefits are included from SCO, um, or some to be covered, it's about thirty thousand dollars, which is on that stipend, or if you're checking to cover your dependents, you have to pay SCO for it, and I have to juggle off on that, how many choices do you manage to have, because we get advantage benefits for healthcare coverage? How many choices is it just managed by?
No, it, it's about six plan, six plans to choose from.
John says it's about six plans to choose from, so there are choices there, um, there are very good plans, I've had to note the plans, so I'm very, very fortunate, especially considering that, uh, they were much better than what I got through my previous employers, and so it's a huge.
Thank you. This question is from David, um, addressed to either Troy or Will. What happens if you plan on spending two thousand dollars but go over?
What happens if you plan on spending two thousand, like, go over?
I mean, not spending, but if you do spend.
Yeah, so the question was if you, um, didn't plan on spending two thousand, but you ended up hitting that, uh, you basically just have ten days to file Form 410 with the Secretary of State. So once you hit that threshold, you file a form with the state, and there's also an option where you, there's no penalty for just filing the form, um, and then checking not yet qualified, there's a little box in the top left corner, you can check qualified, which means you already hit the two thousand dollar threshold, or you can check not yet qualified, which means you haven't yet, but you will have to submit an amendment later saying that you have qualified, um, so, but once you qualify, you'll also have to pay a fifty dollar, um, fee to the Secretary of State every year, so basically just file a form within ten days, once you get to that number.
Alrighty, thank you. Um, this question, these two questions I'm going to combine, they're from Chris Fox and Josh, um, and addressed to Caitlin, but any of our trustees can answer the question as well, because I'm combining two questions. Okay, how important are endorsements in the campaign? That's question number one. Question number two is, did you pursue an endorsement from your school district's teachers union? Question number three, was that helpful in your campaign?
Yes, endorsements are very helpful, um, the teachers union was actually one of the first groups I talked to when I was even thinking about running, because again, my whole thing was that I was so mad that the teachers even had to go long-term in the first place, um, so you know, I was talking about before I pulled papers. Um, so yes, I did seek their endorsement and get it, I also, I was the only one who bought the teachers' endorsement and the local papers' endorsement, um, and I got a couple other groups as well, and I think that really gave me some legitimacy, especially as, again, a twenty-five-year-old who had just moved back to town. Um, I think endorsements are really key if there are bodies that have, you know, trust and buy-in from people, and the teachers union usually has a lot of buy-in and trust in your community, um, so if you can get that one, it's always, always a good one.
Can I ask a question on that? The, um, endorsements in the vote camp for the guy, is that, are they due August ninth as well, or is that a separate deadline for endorsements in the vote guide pamphlet?
Um, we don't put any endorsements in our voter information guide, we might be giving the Secretary of State's one, um, but, so they, those are, they do have a deadline, but that's, uh, for other offices over there, so, yeah.
So you would put them in your, your statement then?
Yeah.
And that has to be by August ninth.
So has it come back to you, questioning the original term, my one-year term? I did have to, uh, consider the fact that other people might be trying to run for that seat when the election came, so I went around, and it's really about talking to the people who are in your circle, who you think you can get the endorsement from. I talked to people in the community, but with nonprofits and other agencies, and just asked them, are you willing to endorse? Ninety-five percent of the time, it's an instant yes. It's like one of the easiest things to ask for, and so, think of all the hands that you're in contact with, all the hands that you're in front with, do, it's absolutely worth it, and I think if you're trying to, like, stay out of competition, that's one of the best ways to do it, is go get that endorsement first. You will also find people who are willing to endorse two candidates of the same race, so, yeah, it's also a good opportunity.
This question is from Callie Deuce Wagner. How does personal safety fill these days? Personal safety.
There, there actually was a time, and it was more during COVID, or, you know, during that pandemic, I can't remember, and that personal safety actually really felt like an issue in our district that was, things had gotten ugly, and, um, it was a little uncomfortable, but I would say now, um, it's a lot better. But, but we had, we also have a trustee who is a excellent candidate, so, but I still agree, it's watching the work. You know, I don't worry about it anymore, but there, there was a hot going there.
I think during COVID, some of us were more worried about our personal safety, just because people were being so riled up, um, and really aggressive in their language. Um, I have a really good physical health say, because we've been back in person, but the mental, emotional safety part is the big part, you have people screaming, you telling you you're a horrible person, you don't care about teachers, you don't care about kids, you know, like, from either side, from all the sides, that ends up happening by what you do, um, so taking care of your mental, emotional safety is really important, and so they keep trying to more muster government than on the, on the campaign, you know, that's
Also, remember that you're one of five, and I think, depending on who sits in the board, you kind of created this allyship and this friendship and this mutual respect, where we all get, we all have each other's back, and there's solidarity within that, um, and that grows as, as you continue to work together as a team, because you are one of five, it's, it's five of you, and sometimes you gel, and sometimes we're not gelling, but we'll get there to gel again, um, and work it out, so recognize that you're not sitting there alone, and that you have, hopefully, four people backing you up, or five people backing you up, um, that helps the space feel better.
Yeah, we did get some interesting emails and comments from people, especially during COVID, and during fires, and stuff, and, you know, how could you let schools close the school, how could you let schools keep schools open? The language can get very accusatory and direct, and I think I have to remind myself is, uh, a lot of these things come from an emotional level, I have to try to prove myself from that, and remember that, uh, usually we have our president at times respond to those emails, and it's usually looking healthy to somebody in the office, looking healthy for them to respond to the program, the last thing we want to do is write an email that engages somebody in that, that level of discourse that's going to be written down.
Okay, so we have a question from Dana Carney. For nomination information, can you give this information in both English and Spanish? I just want to let you all know that we do have nomination information out in the lobby, and it is in both English and Spanish. Okay, now comes the time for the last call for questions. Last call for questions. Whoa, that's someone in the corner, corner Laurel, hello?
Hi. Um, my question for anyone who's willing to answer, um, how do you handle, like, as a board, is there, um, is there a process or a, um, protocol to handle, um, the, the conundrum between white supremacy culture and, uh, you know, like, the, the folks who are really backing the, uh, folks of color in the county, um, how do you handle that? Like, and sometimes it's even amongst board members.
Do you mean, like, is there in a board meeting for you to get out of?
Yeah, or it comes to you, an email, it comes to you through public comment, through any, anything, like, um, how is it, you know, how, is there a protocol, or is there just answer, respond to individuals, um, or has there ever been, um, any sort of, like, let's pre, let's prepare for this kind of thing? Or has there ever been any sort of like, let's, let's prepare for this kind of thing?
So there's lots of shared, there are three different situations. And all clear will be totally different. So email, we have board policy, like if we email the entire board, I can't reply back and CC all day, the board members, that's a right violation. But I have a personal policy, if you're screaming at me but shout, you have a little revolt, we aren't having a conversation. If you just want to yell at me, you yell at me, you're fine, carry on. I will respond. If someone wants to have a conversation about something, though, I will respond to that. And each of us, as board members, have different, different ways of responding to different things. Our board governing handbook, if the, if a press or someone who's reaching out on behalf of the news or press or something like that, our board governing handbook, when the superintendent, board president can talk on behalf of the board. Public comment is actually probably one of the easiest. You yell at me and say whatever you want, I actually can't respond. If it's not on the agenda, we can't have a conversation about it.
Oh, you know what I mean? I'm not actually referring to yelling. I'm not actually referring to disrespect. I'm just referring to the dichotomy of views and perspectives and how that comes across. So how, how you handle it as a board?
Yeah, so during public comment, people are allowed to say whatever they want. We can't respond that. We can't have a conversation about it. It's not a gentrified item. Even if it is a gentrified item, you can't go back and forth with the board. Like we can talk about each other as a board, but. And if it came up and someone wanted to talk to us about a very specific topic, how can as a board member say, hey, superintendent, or maybe president, whoever, can we talk about this at the next meeting? So, but then the other ones, it would just be that board member. You can talk as an individual, you can't talk as a board outside of a board meeting. So does that sound a little bit?
Yeah. Are there any folks on the panel that are over the global majority that can answer?
Well, I think there'll be one of the global majorities that I want to put her on the spot.
Yeah, she's willing to hear.
As someone who has served as a white president right after we had a black president, I can say that our public commenters have treated her very differently than they treated me. She was also the president during COVID, so I mean, maybe that's why. But no, that's not why. So I try to pull it out when I see it, but I also have to take the space into account. And so more often than not, it's checking in with people after the fact, seeing how they're doing. I wouldn't say that we have explicit protocols about how to handle that. Trying to tie in our, our values and be really clear about what our values are and that our values are, like to resist and always trying to bring it back to that.
And we have governance workshops that we do to build team along, yeah, to be able to team with end coaches and our team members. I can say it's really, really hard to do so. Yeah, really, really hard. I know that as how I behave and what I'm willing to put a stop to is different than all of my other colleagues. But yet I still go back and checking in with them. And even hearing a public comment that went directly to, you know, Andrew, oh, they're bashing on Andrew, I would always be like, hey, you're okay. Check in and be a good, kind human. And also just reminding the public, like, hey, this is the space and this is what we're here for. And let's make sure that we continue to talk about students and best about students and student safety and students learning. Number one priority, you know, yet, we're here because of the students learning. So being able to come back and ground everybody when it gets a little bit heated and checking in on your colleagues that are getting attacked is, is something that I perform. And I think we have discussed, and we do discuss during our governance handbook, trainees with your team building activities. I'm like, how are we going to do this and how are we going to support each other? What is it that you need from me and what is it that I need with you? And making sure that that's very, very clear. It's not perfect.
No. Thank you.
And we'll see, as a board, we have guiding principles and our board goals as well as our handle of course. But it's very rare on our board, fortunately, we have much internal disagreement. And when we do, we're able to handle it respectfully because we all agree on the same page, that we all have this shared goal of students. That's the end goal, to make sure that students succeed. So as long as you keep that in mind, we're able to get through this and the goals that they lay out are guiding principles. And we go back every two years and we do a board self-evaluation to make sure that we're sticking to those goals and if they need to be updated, they do.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I have a question about, so how do we feel like the boards are representing, like San Rosa's really changed in the last 15 years? And so are we feeling like we're representing the communities, disability rates, economic on our boards? And if we are, do we have a plan to change that?
Can you, sorry, there's a, that's sort of easy question to.
So, I'm thinking about basically, what is the plan in order, for each of you across the boards and for your general board? Are we feeling like we're representing San Rosa and our, and Sonoma County really well yet? Or do we feel like there's a little more work to be done? And if there is, what is the plan? Is there a plan?
Yes, I think.
Is that?
Yes, yeah, and I can't speak to San Rosa, but and I own a small elementary school district in San Rosa. But I can tell you that we've had this conversation several times about trying to get representation from other parts of our neighborhoods or the different, there's one or two of our schools identified. I just never see any interest in it. Not, I don't think it, so we've, we've done things where we've tried to ring flyers directly there, saying this is, you know, I'm trying to pass them out to parents and families at those actual school sites. And I think that's been a little, a little more not with an email or sending something electronic, but it's, I mean, we're still trying to figure out how to get representation in this whole board. I will say, whatever the board was, everything was all clear to us. And maybe all the help, but just all different types of diversity and diversity in the board. Very important education.
So. That's what I'm thinking. This might be a good question for the gentleman from the registrar's office, because like a lot of these requirements are a little onerous, you know, and scary and expensive. And I know over the years I've looked at them for the board and once I look really well at them, I'm like, nope. So I'm only back because we really meet people. I tell my kids that if you look at who the government is, it's us. So that's why I'm willing.
So I, you guys hear me by the yell? Like, okay, we're good. Oh, we're better than. Sorry, sorry. I actually thought about running, okay, sorry, I can't believe in 2020. So I actually thought about running in 2016. I was sitting right up there where you all were. And I didn't, because at that point, the party one part was one district and the average trustee was spending $30,000. I don't have that many friends and my friends don't have that much money. So when the party one part went to fight district, and I do have one of the bigger districts, it was more doable for me. I did go over the $2,000 threshold, not, I don't want to say by accident. I didn't, me too, my family was actually only spending $850. But then you'll actually be surprised, people like, like, you know, $20 here and $20 there, all of a sudden kind of actually mess that up. I was a little fortunate because I do a marketing degree, so I was able to make my flyer myself and then send it out. You, like the social media and putting, I think San Rosa's probably districts now too, it just makes it more easy to, our areas, it makes it easier to, to check out. If it's the money, I promise you, you can win and only have to spend that by anything. Like don't let the money go, like stop you from running. Because my, I, I have, I beat the incumbent and he outspent me a lot more than, than I spent. So and I didn't really need to spend that, it's just people, $20 adds up here and there. So if there really is some money that's stopping you from doing it, just do it. Write your statement qualifications, put it in a book. And think about the things that you vote for. That statement qualification says so much more than any ad in a newspaper. You don't need to add a newspaper article, add a newspaper. I just went around and talked to people and I got it, so.
I don't, I just, I feel very much in a spirit, very question, wholeheartedly, I think it's dangerous to put it on the sitting trustees because it is so like, it is older and tired. But again, I'm not running for reelection, so I'm out actively trying to find someone in my district to run, who will represent a community, the neighborhood I live in. It's not quite 50/50, I would say probably 50/50, like, you know, all and white. So I would love for it to be like a lone person next time. Someone who went to the schools or is a parent or just like any community member. But I think it, it's better when it comes from the community and the community, I can find someone who's already being a leader amongst themselves rather than us trying to crown our next, next person. Even if that ends up being the perfect person, I think that's also can be dangerous. But like the system of our office, right, it was set up to be exclusive. Like that's the history of voting in this country. So I think one thing that we can do as trustees at districts is do things to pay us a little bit more. Not enough to live on necessarily, but enough for childcare, for gas, for healthcare, different things. Enough that maybe someone will make work 20 or 30 hours and we can really be a dedicated school program. So I think that is one thing that control that would help ease the burden.
In terms of our office, there isn't any fee for filing for school districts. We don't actually take any, the only fee that our office, I think, depending on the district, the district that paid would be for the statement qualifications. But that's totally optional. So if you decided you didn't want to write your statement qualifications, you would have, that's something that by district, depends on if they paid it, you paid it. And then I think Troy mentioned briefly, the cost of that varies depending on how you will file for that seat, on that district, if it's an out-lot district. And then for the paperwork, you can always come and do all of us. We're there, I mean, for a lot of hours to the final season. So you come in, we can go through with you as slow as you want, as fast as you want. If you have to be done in 15 minutes, you can probably make it work. It's a lot of writing and access, with 70,000 forms. So, yeah, and we want to make it easy for people. We all like to, let's say, figure it out most part. So, yeah, come and do it.
Okay, we have time for one last question. I see your hand in the corner.
So if you were appointed and now it's time to run, are you considered an incumbent?
So, is, so you can be appointed to a vacancy? So if someone like resigned, you'd be considered an appointed incumbent? So essentially just to make you an incumbent, but like in terms of your designation that you can use, it would be appointed incumbent. But if you're appointed to a vacancy from an election, then you're appointed in lieu with an election. And it, again, it functions the same, but yeah, more or less, you just didn't have to go to the ballot because there weren't enough people applying for a set vacancy.
Okay, this concludes the portion of question answered. So I will make one final closing comment, which is thanking to everyone for coming out. Your willingness to ask questions. I'd like to thank Monique for her willingness to interpret, as well as our panelists for, for answering questions. And they were, were well thought out. And I could just tell that you're passionate about your position. And for everyone who has registered, you will be emailed all of these slides. So if you have not registered, please see Lacy and give her your email address. Okay, that concludes the session on tonight and next week.